Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's Work Session, May the 3rd, 2021. Would please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this day. We thank you for your continued blessing. We ask your continued guidance for our school system, continued protection for our school system and staff, and we continue to trust you in all that we say and do. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's play allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is citizens addressed to the board. No one signed in. All right, number four, approval of our work session agenda. Can I have a motion?
Same as you.
Motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewitt. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries five zero. All right, this time I'll turn over Dr. Poole's.
Good evening, everyone. Under Goal Area One, student success. If you could pull that up, Rusty, just to give a brief overview of where we stand presently, the 28th of May is graduation. And so as we continue to push on towards getting our class of 2021 ready to graduate, you'll see the numbers here. Basically, we're sitting right now with students on track at 89%. So 89% graduation rate with six students missing just one class. So those students have been identified, teachers are working with them. I really strongly believe that those six students will pull it out. They technically have all of the month of May and all of the month of June to get it, but if they don't get it in May, they don't walk. So we're trying to make sure they have everything possible. We do have one student there that's missing three, and we have two that are five plus. So my expectation at this point is that we might be able to come in at the 96 percentile, possibly through the summer, the 98. So again, very strong graduation rate. All right, any questions on that? All right, next item on here is the end of year testing. I'd like to ask Mr. McNair to give us a brief overview of where we stand right now with the end of year testing.
Good evening, board members. Just wanted to give you guys an update. Last week, we started with our EOGs, and EOGs mainly for the elementary and the middle schools. And I can tell you with the practice and the leadership at the school with our school test coordinators, the students were allowed to go in and practice before the test. And as a result, we've had great participation. We want to give Dr. Poole this some heads up for just pushing the district to make sure our students came back to school. And so again, looking at these test results, it's going to be very important as far as our planning moving down the road. But also wanted to just mention, again, our students are back in school, we're getting most of them tested, and those are the areas that we're looking at when we start looking at ELA and mathematics, which were tested last week. Science is fifth and eighth grade, and then social studies is eighth grade only. Today, we started American Lit for our high school. And I can tell you with section one, we were at about 86% of our high school students that were there, present, and testing. So we're looking for our numbers to pretty much stay around the same. One of the things I wanted to let you guys know also is that our test design changed a little bit this year in order to reduce the number of test items and the impact of the length of time that the students are testing. What they focused on is really keying in on those key areas that they would test on as opposed to making the test real lengthy like it's been in the past. What we did as a result is we spread the test out. So our kids aren't testing two and three hours at a time, because you know with little kids, after a while, they give up and stop testing. So the first hour went after they've had breakfast, energized, they're testing, and then they go back on to their regular day. So this has really benefited us by having a shorter test and allowing them to test for a shorter period of time. So it's very exciting about that. Wanted to give you guys an update on kind of the percentages. If you look over in the highlight for math and ELA, if you look at math and English Language Arts, you can see that those are the number of tests that have been completed just based on the two schools that have tested last week. We'll have further updated information with the high school as they continue on with their testing. But we're looking at about 85% of our math ELA and then 82% math ELA at the middle school. This is outstanding, seeing that we're in a pandemic year and have kids coming in. Those percentages are increasing as I'm speaking because we're bringing kids in that are on virtual and the kids in that are from G nets and any alternative school, we're bringing them in and testing them also. This morning, we actually tested a kid that was on hospital homebound. He was willing to come in and test with American Lit for his high school credit. So we're really excited about it and looking forward to having an ongoing smooth week with our testing. So again, just work with our students and just wish for the best. But we got a lot of students in testing, and we're excited about the results that we'll get from them. It's again, it's about the participation this year. We want to do the best we can, but at the same time, really focusing on getting them in here so we can look at where we are and where we stand as a district.
Remember, this is a metrics this year specifically so that we can see where our students fall, especially with the learning loss that took place for those many, many months that we're able to say, here's where we're at. And again, we came back with full fours in January and only had a few of our students still out, but many of, over 600, were in and out due to the COVID restrictions that were there. So, you know, the numbers that Mr. McNair just presented to you don't reflect a pass or fail or score or anything. It's just the participation rate as it stands. So come Monday next during our regular meeting, he'll give you an update and we'll see where we're at. And we do have some flexibility to continue to carry on with the testing.
Yeah, and only one last thing, and thank you, Dr. Poole. Wanted to mention that the test results that we're looking at, or they should come back as early as May 19. And that's kind of the tentative date with the state, and that would vary, and EOCs by May 20. So we're going to have tests coming in unlike in the past where we test, two days later we'll get the results. I'm not sure what they're doing this year, but we will get them back by those late dates this time. So just wanted to keep you updated, and that can change also.
Mr. McNair has done an outstanding job of coordinating this. We appreciate everything he does for us every day, but the testing is a very challenging thing, and so we appreciate you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item up here is the summer school plan. If I could get Ms. Sheets to come up and tell us real quick what our plans are. I know that we have some tentative plans put together, and they're meeting with the principals.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see your faces. So decades ago, you know, Alice Cooper came out with the song "School's Out for Summer." Not anymore. So summer school is going to run from June 7th to all the way through July 1st, and it's going to run Monday through Thursday. And so it'll start, students can start coming to the schools at 7:30 in the morning, and then we'll release them around 12 noon. We'll provide them with breakfast and lunch and transportation. What else? It's a great kickoff to our summer reading program, and the principals are going to give us their detailed plans on Thursday. We're going to be really cognizant of everything they're doing. But do y'all have any questions?
What was the ratio that we decided?
That's right, thank you. So the teacher to student ratio is going to be anywhere from one to 10 at the lower grades, and then in middle school and high school can go up to one to 15.
That's a good ratio for the intent that's going there. What's our focus going to be?
Our focus is going to be math and reading, and we'll do both acceleration as well as remediation.
And the high school plan is still a work in progress, and we're meeting with them. And a lot of that is just credit repair and credit recovery. Any questions on summer school?
Oh, sure. Starts June 7th. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sheets. All right, if I can ask Mr. Masa to talk about Goal Area Two, 2020 Vision for School Nutrition Recognition.
Great evening, board. Pleasure to be before you, especially to talk about the 2020 vision for school nutrition. It seems to be that we are in an elite group of school systems that have been awarded for serving healthy meals that are sponsored by locally grown agriculture from produce that comes from Georgia. We partner with a company called Sunneland, and they purchase their products from local farms here in Georgia. And when we do that, we are supporting Georgia and we are providing fresh nutritious food. And so the amount of food that we purchased from them qualified us to be recognized by the state. We'll have a sign out in front of our school that says that we are doing it and really providing healthy meals. Ms. Harrison goes the extra mile and makes sure that all the food that we serve is nutritious and healthy, and this is just another prime example of what we're doing to make it happen in the nutrition department.
I ate a red pear today, and it was delicious, and it was from here in Georgia.
Red pears, the apples are always crisp. We've done a really good job. This is one thing I'll just add to it. Rose and their team go through each one of those boxes of food. Because one day I got the opportunity to check in a truck and see what it was like, and they don't play their games. All the, every box we went through and looked through, and we're getting good fruit and good fresh stuff from right here, growing in Georgia.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Can I get Mr. Boone to talk about our Chromebook rollout? Just a quick update on that for item number two, B2.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So in February, or end of January, beginning of February, we did our one-to-one Chromebook rollouts with grades four through 12 taking their Chromebooks home. And overall, we are extremely pleased with how well that's going. The students have really taken a pride of ownership in their Chromebooks. They're keeping them charged, they're bringing them to school like they're supposed to. We have seen our breakage rate go down significantly since we went one-to-one. From August to December, we had 65 to 70 Chromebooks broken that were in our classrooms, and since we've done our one-to-one rollout, I think we've had 15, maybe 18 Chromebooks broken at this point. So our breakage rate has went down significantly. And from that, Dr. Poole and I have even had a conversation about our technology use fee for next year possibly not being the $30 that we had originally put out there, lowering that a little bit just because we haven't had the breakage that we anticipated.
I think that skin in the game helped.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and we had, I know Ms. Gordon at the elementary school, she got a text from a parent saying, basically, I don't know who told my kid to keep their Chromebook with him at all times, but he's taking it very seriously. And to the point that we were at a basketball game, and he wanted to take his Chromebook into the basketball game. I told him, no, you've got to leave it in the car. And he said, well, Mom, if our car gets hit in the parking lot, my Chromebook falls out of the car and gets messed up, you're responsible, Mom. So, you know, it was a cool little story to hear, but you know, with that being said, that pride of ownership has been amazing with these kids. We are working on our plan on how we're going to collect them and then read this person next year. We're working on all those plans at the end of this week.
It's my intent that I really want them to be brought back in, checked, and reissued for summer read. And so they're working out a plan to make sure, because our students should be reading, you know, the digital versions of a variety of different things assigned through the summer, and so they can't do that without the Chromebook. So we're working on that plan as well.
Yep. The only other thing I want to throw in on that is the testing this year, having Chromebooks already in the students' hands, has went extremely well. We've gotten a lot of good feedback. We had several spares available at each school, and it's my understanding that they haven't really had to get into the spares a whole lot because the students have been bringing them, they're taking care of them. So it's really nice and going very well.
We did purchase some mice for the high school primarily so that they can manipulate a little differently, they plug in. So, but again, I think that, you know, McIntosh should be extremely proud of the advancements in technology right now. Really, really have moved mountains.
Yep. And I do want to throw in there too, Mr. Masa just reminded me that, you know, us purchasing those cases to go on them have helped. You know, I think that has helped with our reduction in the breakage. It's definitely helped with our pride of ownership. You know, each kid's got that case that they can tuck their power supply and everything in. You know, it's going well.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
All right, the next item up here, we have some guests to talk about solar energy options, and I don't know if we have an attachment to that. I sure hope we do. There it is. So if y'all don't mind introducing yourselves to the board, let us know, just to give a little background for those that are here, that we have been looking at this for about six or seven months. You know, this is not something we want to jump in just haphazardly. We want to make sure that we know whether or not this is, this will work to our advantage. And so we've had our own little committee within the district. We've looked at it, the board has heard this before. There are three slides here, and so what I'd like you to do is skip to number three. That's the one I want. Okay, and so again, if y'all would introduce yourselves, and then let's talk about this grand plan.
Hi, I'm Tom Little. I'm with EarthWalk Communications. I'm the vice president of our SolarWalk division.
I'm Darius Simon with EarthWalk. I work along with Tom.
Hello, I'm Josh Barnes, local Georgia solar installation company from SolarSale USA.
Wonderful.
SolarSale USA is one of EarthWalk's SolarWalk's partners. When we initially talked to the district about what you wanted to do with solar, we took that out to several different partners around the country, both national and local partners, to find one that can do the job for you, keep you good savings, good rates. And SolarSale was the one who really stepped up to the plate and came in with the best proposal.
And with the background of working locally in Georgia.
Good.
I believe, Josh, that one of the things in your proposal was about local contractors?
Yes, local and suburbs, using the talent in the area that there are available. We always use that resource first. We're based out of Atlanta, but we service the southeast. So we cover all Tennessee, North Carolina, South Carolina, and down to Florida and Alabama. And for projects like this, I've been in business for 10 years. I started the company 10 years ago, and now we have a staff of 50 people, and I travel around, talking to folks like you, trying to convince them that going brings the right thing in.
So just to kind of give everyone here just a reminder, what we're talking about is that we would, if we went with this proposal, we would have solar panels placed on the roofs at Todd Grant, the roofs at the middle school, and then the potential for a solar farm out there in some of the land out at the high school if we do that. You have two different electric companies that we're dealing with. The focus primarily, again, and just to kind of hit this again to make sure we're straight, the panels are pretty well, last for 30-plus years.
Yes.
Okay, is that about right, 30-plus?
So just to be specific, they're warranted for 25 years.
Okay.
The lifetime of the product is now 40-plus years.
Okay, and so they still work after that. Now, technology's going to change, and so, you know, we've had this, you buy a new car with all the bells and whistles, and next year, something else comes out. It's likely. You know, the commitment if we get into this is 20, 25 years, so we want to make sure that we take it carefully if we do it. So they would end up coming in, you know, they would install these safely on the rooftops. They maintain them, they make sure that there, if there's any damage to our roof, they'll make sure that's taken care of. You know, our insurance is aware if this was to take place, if a kid decided to throw a rock up there, most likely it won't break anyway, because I understand it's, they're very, very sturdy. You know, but if we have a hurricane that comes in and wipes them out, you know, there's liability issues that come with that, but again, that's part of the agreement. The intent of this is, is that the energy produced off of these panels would go to the power grid. It's not going to go to batteries, we're not restoring it, but it does then reduce, because of the kilowatt hour cost, reduce our overall cost. So where we spend an awful lot of money, and you'll see that in this chart, you know, it gets reduced by this process. So can you go over this chart for us real quick so we remind everybody what it means?
Certainly. When we're looking at doing this, working with Georgia Power and Light, they have a capacity limit of 250 kilowatts of solar energy per location. So that is both the middle school and Todd Grant Elementary School. The high school is on Coastal Electric, and they have a maximum of 100 kilowatts, which is a very small amount. And what we've talked about up there is putting in a small field of ground mounts to produce that energy. As Dr. Poole said, on both the middle school and the elementary school, we're talking about roof mounted solar panels. What you're looking at is a pretty complex chart that took a while for me to put together and give you some actual real reference on what's going on. You've got what I'm calling the greater meters, which are the meters that have large amounts of electricity being pooled off of them, and those are the ones that we're allowed to offset the solar energy against. As Dr. Poole said, what we're doing is instead of tying directly into the schools, the power energy is going directly into the power grid. Nothing's changing about the way the power is delivered to the schools. There's no change at all in that. But for every kilowatt hour of energy that we put into the grid, that gets credited to your electric bill.
And just to remind everybody, if the lights go out, they go out. They won't stay on just because we have solar.
If the power goes out, we're required to have the solar energy grid go offline to protect the utility workers from having energy back flowing down the line.
So pretty much, it's not a battery backup.
Not a battery backup.
The system we're proposing at this point. Battery backup is something that's coming, but it's still real expensive.
Yep, yep, yep.
Could this system be compatible with that later on down the road?
There is always interchangeability with systems down the road that can add on batteries.
Okay.
And also, if the rules and regulations change, additional solar could be added later on down the road as well. But what was designed at this point is the maximum capacity that is allowable by the local regulations in place. So what I've got here on this chart is showing what your historical energy use is, what you've been paying for the energy, both on these high-use meters and some of the smaller meters that are around the district. And then the second column at the top is what we're talking about producing for you. This is the expected production over time, well, the size and the expected production of the energy. Down in the bottom of the chart, you see years one through 20, because what we're proposing is a 20-year power purchase agreement for you, where we're guaranteeing you the rates for the power that's generated off of this system for the next 20 years. It starts at seven and a half cents.
Eight.
Sorry, eight. It's been a lot of time since we started, 8.11, with a 1.99% escalator every year. So year one, it's 8.1. Year two, 8.26.
8.26.
8.26, and so on. If there was absolutely no increase to your power rates in the future, it would be year 17 before you're paying as much for our power as what you're currently paying.
That's slide one, if y'all want to go back to look at it, but it's, but this escalator over here that says an escalator has three on it for utility escalator. I gave three scenarios. One is at zero, meaning we've made zero, there's no rate change. Then we'd cut it in half, it's at 1.5 is the second slide, and this one's three, which is industry average is about 3% increase in overall power.
Right. So, and you know, the 0% escalation is not very realistic. It's not something that's going to happen. There's going to be some power rate escalation. So you're going to be saving money every year of this program. Based on the, I'm sorry, industry average of 3% escalation, you will save a total of $1 million plus over the 20-year period. And this is with no out-of-pocket expense to the district, zero.
Will you say that one more time? Just, I mean, yeah, say that one more time.
$1 million plus of savings over a 20-year period.
Zero maintenance expenses.
Maintenance, no cost at all to the district, no district resources being used to maintain the system whatsoever.
Even if we went with zero, meaning that the cost of energy did not increase over this 20 years, I think we saved like $200,000. You know, and really what it comes down to is, do we say we're willing to put solar panels on a building and let it go and pay less? You know, we could turn it around a year from now with the Green New Deal that's being worked, who knows? And solar panels might be 10 times more expensive, or they might be less. And what's your prediction?
Fortunately, the price of all raw materials, if you look right now, the costs of any deals that are going to happen outside where we purchase, unfortunately, our materials from, aren't here. So all of raw materials are going to make it so the panels are posted. So if you bought a piece of lumber since January.
Yeah, that's true.
Why is it since January that the price has tripled?
Yes.
Even domestically, prices are going up on metals and things like that. EarthWalk's other business is laptop carts, and our prices have gone up 30% this year alone on the metal part of the carts. So.
So if you look at this again, just so everybody's straight, you know, when you go across, the first year savings, 32.9, and then it just 34, 36. And again, the escalators are what makes the difference on this. And obviously, this is also an investment for these gentlemen. So these panels have to be paid off, which is why they get a return on, and they can offer us what they do. My biggest concern on this is obviously technology's going to change. So do I buy the new car with all the bells and whistles now, knowing that in 20 years I'm stuck with it? Or do we wait? And if you wait, you're still going to have the same dilemma. You know, go ahead.
If I may, there's a couple of reasons not to wait at this point in time. Number one is that the Georgia Power and Utility Commission has limited the size of the program with Georgia Power and Light. It came online last June, I believe it was.
It was very quiet.
And already a third of what they have set up has been allocated. Josh is predicting that, what, by the end of, by the end of the year, all that capacity's going to be gone.
Well, it's good for your business.
I have not had a day off.
All right, so again, when you take a look at this, these are all, these are all projections. Now, at the end of the 20 years, we have to make a decision on what Josh is going to let us do with these, right?
That's right. I would give you the full purchase value of $1.
Which then means we have to operate and manage them and maintain them and repair them and all that? That's one option, right?
Or, at that point, if we think about computers, I want to use this analogy, 20 years ago, what this looked like, I can only imagine the solar panels being torn off.
That's right. Which means what? That we redo another lease?
You can do another lease, and I imagine if we're putting a couple thousand panels up there now, it probably could be a couple hundred.
It's amazing, isn't it?
In fact, that's what's already happened in the past five years. The solar panel we used to install on your roof would have been taller than me, and now it's about my height, and it produces the same power.
So with that being said, if we were to go with this, and we put the one that's not quite at your head, five years from now, are you going to replace those, or is it pretty well stuck with those?
Well, we have no reason to replace them until the power generation, because either way, it's the same amount of power that they're going to generate. So until the panels that are up there aren't generating enough power to meet your needs, whatever they are at that point, other technology's going to come along.
What about the efficiency and the degradation of those panels through the years?
That's with that 25-year warranty, we have to make accounts for that degradation, soiling, shading, plus we'll be able to maintain them cleanly if needed, check the wire.
So what's the, what's the potential for damaging our roof?
Well, hey, we're going to inspect your roof before we ever step up there, but believe me on it, make sure everyone is okay with the quality of it. If there's any leaks or damages, we'll find out before we ever put the roof in. The second best part about our system is we don't penetrate the roof, so there'll be no holes.
Oh, that's good.
We sit on top of the roof, and it's called palletted, distributed. So the weight is around eight pounds per square foot. So no weight issues at all. And of course, we'll still check the structure underneath the roof. We'll get engineers to sign off that whatever beams, whatever costs.
But that's all I knew.
On us to make sure that we can handle the weight. The city, the county, all of those folks will have to sign off on everything. The city, the county, all of those folks will have to sign off on everything before we ever get up there and install anything required. Folks will have to make sure we're installing everything within their requirements. As far as safety goes, we go above and beyond and then the next step, you know.
All right, so let's talk about how long does it take from start to finish and how much of a disruption would it be to the schools to put them up?
All right, so our goal, and we've done, I've done the Augusta Mall, so if you've ever been to the Augusta Mall, it's one of the busiest malls in the southeast. Seven days a week, they never close, and we were not allowed to interrupt their business one, we were not even allowed to turn off the power, to test our equipment, because it's a mall and they don't shut off everything. So low impact, we would pick a spot somewhere in the parking lot, we'd arrange that with you, maybe tuck our equipment, depending on where we're deploying. I haven't walked around all the buildings, I'm not sure exactly which one they're going on. But we wouldn't impact your operations. That's overall the goal, except for the kids seeing guys working hauling solar panels up to the roof.
How long does it take?
I mean, how long does it take? We're looking at two projects now?
Probably two. I'm going to just say, my, my suggestion at this point, if we go with this, we might want to delay the high school and just work with Georgia Power.
We're looking at two, 250 kilowatt projects, start to finish, we're looking at five to eight weeks of actual construction.
And how long does it take for you to get this materials in and...
Well, one of the materials that would delay so much is the local jurisdiction and the rules, regulations, the sign-off, the required...
Like anything the city manager might have a problem with?
Whatever he wants, whatever he wants. Letters, structural letters, engineers, that's usually where the whole of this is permitting and processing, that we have no control over. The power company, they're breaking work for the power all day, every day, as far as their application, kind of what goes, we're looking at, at the moment, we imply about 10 to 12 weeks before they would say, all right, the green light, lights up.
So again, now, if we don't use the amount of energy that it produces, what happens?
First, you're going to use them.
Had to ask though, because there's, there's a reason for that question.
12% of the escalators. We're then hoping to get, borrowing another pandemic...
You know, that's my point, is that we went through the pandemic and shut things down and for five, six months, and of course, we saved a lot of money on electricity, and so do we end up still paying a certain percentage?
Can I take that one? The reason why you...
This is being recorded, just so you know.
Absolutely. So the key word is net metering. I want everybody who's interested to go home and Google "net metering," because it's the key to what makes solar effective now in Georgia versus for the past nine years I've been in business in Georgia where we did not have net metering. When the system's sitting up there generating power, and even during a day, like a normal day, the system's going to generate more power than your building will use. It's guaranteed. So you want the power company to be your battery for you, instead of you having to put a big old battery in the backyard. So they're going to give you credit, one for one, for every bit of power the system sends to them. So lights go off during another pandemic, you'll have a huge credit on you.
It rolls forward.
That rolls forward, and definitely, because in Georgia Power's mind, you will never cut off from them, so they'll inevitably check that credit.
All right, so I also understand that we will continue to receive a bill from Georgia Power and then a bill from you?
That is necessary, you will, fortunately.
Who do we get the other bill from?
Absolutely. The other bill will be from the, from me.
Yeah, okay.
Hopefully direct, but indirectly.
I know I've asked a lot of questions, but you know, I wanted to make sure that these are things we've talked about. I'd love to go green. We've been bit a little bit on certain areas, and I just want to make sure that we have gone the extra mile to do this right, if we do it. You know, I see this as a, again, no cost to us. The potential's there to continue to save, even if we save 10 bucks, it's still a savings that we have.
It's not cost us.
Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything. And they've done, they've done a lot of work to make sure of this, and this could be a, this could be something others can catch on to. Can we get a percentage if anybody else goes after us?
So as far as your exposure, I mean, you make the nationwide news. There's not many school districts still adopting the idea, or some of them are just like you folks.
And I just want to say this, and I know you've answered me, you've answered the same question for me 40 times. Over this 20 years, we will not have to have any out-of-pocket expense.
For the solar panels themselves.
Right, right.
The equipment, you will be paying for the power.
But we will save with Georgia Power, and that's what, okay.
We're going to charge you less power than Georgia Power.
Right.
You're going to pay for your power at a rate lower than what you're paying for.
And why is that? So to demystify this whole thing, it's because right now, there's a lot of rich people who want to buy you folks' solar panels, because they get tax credits and incentives.
That's right. They get the tax credit, and that's, don't fool anybody.
That was going to be my question.
They get big, and we can't get it, but they do.
That's the bottom.
That was going to be my question, to help explain it for the public. We were on that conference call. By the way, Tom, you look a lot bigger on, on...
Well, the camera does add 10 pounds.
That's, you guys make the money off the tax credits that are not available to a public entity.
Yes.
Correct, correct.
So we do have, we do own a lot of churches. I think the largest church in Metro Atlanta, we put 2,000 panels. I've got another even bigger church looking to do 15 megawatts on their project, so...
I've got a question for you.
Shoot you, man.
What kind of, is this the information online about what's being generated on a daily basis that goes along that line?
Monitoring, so yes, you have whoever, you can act even on their phone, put yours to the plug on any computer, any device, you'll be able to log in and see the performance of the solar panels daily. We, that's what we do. We have someone sitting there dedicated every day, just monitoring systems. If one solar panel has any little issue, we get sent an error message, flag, instantly, and our response time is 40 hours.
And my point for that is it's going to allow you to develop curriculum around, like a solar panel generator.
Solar energy.
It can be a great add to your math, science.
Absolutely.
The whole educational thing about putting the solar panels up there, why they're going there, you know, work with the kids, let them get involved.
We'd have to talk to Josh about putting up the sign on 95, that's back in touch with solar.
So I know that we've talked about a letter of intent, so if this board, you know, again, if they, if they decide to move forward with this, what would be the next steps?
So once you sign a letter of intent, the next step would be to get your, there'd be a list of documents that are required. So like any entity, they would request your financials and things like that, to make sure I'm not actually...
That we'll pay our bill.
Pay the bill, pretty much. That's it. And then once you pass through those steps, pretty much within 30 to 45 days, we just started with the actual process of getting the permits, getting plans drawn up, getting site surveys done, and then barring the plan, and city developer, who's in front of him, asks us, and we let him go by.
He's getting those permits.
Hope he's taking them out currently. Within three to four weeks of that time, you will have materials on the ground, and we can start to show. So...
Just curious of comments, if anybody, any of the questions and...
Is there a cost of installation?
Zero.
Zero cost of installation.
I wrote that down.
A lot to him.
Okay, okay.
Zero out of pocket.
So Josh is...
Paying for electricity every step of the way. We have a middle and two.
You're making money on this somehow. I mean, that's fact of it is, for the tax credits.
And they pay me to install.
Very good.
Ms. Tammy. All right, Ms. Tammy is...
Somebody's going to be paying them.
Ask all the questions, Ms. Tammy, because you got to pay the bill.
At the end of the 20 years, if we decide we didn't want it anymore, do you all clean it up?
We sure do. We scoop it right on. One person, and we didn't have to take 20 years to get them.
But I'm assuming the panels are still viable, so...
It's still viable, and unfortunately, in my tenure, had one flying for their business, and you know, we put them up there, and the business went up, so...
Don't give us those.
Yeah.
We don't want them.
You have a question?
Another question, just a, a comment to Ms. Brigman's question, or just to be known that there would be a cost if electricity did not go up. Did I want that to go unnoticed? If there was no change in the electric cost, year 17, there would be a cost to us. That's not anything that we predict that electricity's not going to go up, but that's something to be clear on, so that it doesn't bite us. You said that it never would cost. That's, we don't think that electricity will stay the same. We know it's not.
So if you look at that, that page right there that's up, and we just threw in a 0% increase in utility costs, we would still save $260,000, even though the last 17, 18, 19, we're paying a little bit. It's not realistic that there's not going to be some increase in electricity.
Yeah.
Not only is it not realistic, but we also never filtered in, just extrapolating the savings and the dollars, and if you invested them at 1%, it would never...
That's right.
It'll take the 17 years to 20.
Comments from anybody else?
I'm excited that we could build a curriculum around this.
It could be, it could be amazing. It could be.
You could do a new pathway for that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, pathway, that's what I was thinking.
Mr. Braun, you have solar panels in use right now? Any comments about...
No, this is good technology. Hours is old and it's just outdated, but you know, this is a whole different level.
All right, so what I will do is have a conversation with the board. Usually on Mondays, we make a decision on things. That'll give us all time to think about where we're at, and I'm sure we can wait one more week, right? I, I do appreciate y'all coming and, and you know, you traveled, and you came from Atlanta?
In the weather.
In this weather? Well, you can, you can stay. If you've been here before, go eat, there's great places, seafood. So again, we appreciate it. It's, it's been, it's an eye-opener for us. We'd love to be green, we just want to make the right decision.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you all very much.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all being here.
After one guy in year 17, I'm like, I told you so.
All right, the, the next item up here is just a review that last week, Thursday, we had a retreat, we talked about the budget at length. Just as a reminder, next Monday, we'll ask the board to approve the tentative budget for FY '22. So just to pull up two documents real quick, just to kind of remind everybody where we're at. So the, the item that's here, again, we added a few extra columns, you know, we've got the, the federal money that's coming in, we have to make sure we account for that as well. You'll see that special programs fund, that's our food service. We also have a debt service and a projects fund that we've added. And so although the, the overall consolidated budget is, is a little over 23 million, when you look at that 14,499, or let's say 14.5 for general funds, it's higher than last year, but still not as high as the year before that. So Tammy, is there anything else you want to say specific about this? This will be the notice that we end up putting in the paper if we approve this next week, correct?
I just wanted to just remind everybody that that, in the past, we have had a project fund, but it's always been the Eastwast Project Fund. We are not budgeting any expenditures in Eastwast, other than the debt service. So that is our new local project fund that we are budgeting for next year.
If you'll hit that next slide real quick, this is just a comparison, again, make that just a little bigger. So when you take a look at this, with the FY '20 budget was 14.6, we're still at 14.5. So we're still 100,000 less than we were even before COVID and everything else hit us, and all of the austerity cuts that, that took place. So I think it's a very good budget. The, also, things to notice that our fund balance, we're not pulling out of our fund balance. That's a big difference. And you know, we're going to be able to put money in our fund balance and, and also in our projects account, based on how we have budgeted these items. Any questions at all about the tentative budget? I'm going to ask again that the board approve this, please, next week. If you have any other questions, we can go through those and, and hit them up. Okay, barring any questions, the next area on here is discussion of the previous minutes. Again, if you'll look at those when you can, for item B5, read through those. If there are any changes that you'd like to make to them, bring them to my attention or to Elsie's attention, and we'll make the adjustments if needed. And then we move on to Ms. Tammy, talk about the April 21 financial report.
Good evening, everyone. We turned to page one, the general operating account. We began the month with 4.85 million. We have the, of 1.19 million. That included sale of the land, $40,000, and we also have donations from the Boys and Girls Club for $30,000. We had dispersments of just over 2 million, and that included a transfer to the Energy Lease Debt Service Account of 200,000. And also included in the 1 million dispersment was a $500,000 that we moved to open up the new local project account. And that's leaving us with a cash balance in April 30 of 3.99 million, just under $4 million.
Just to make sure we have a point of clarification, the donation actually came from the Boys and Girls Club, but via the Terry Thomas Foundation. I just want to make sure that we are very grateful for them providing that.
Page 67, general fund revenues. We are 83.33% complete through the fiscal year, and we have 12.1 million in period-to-date receipts, which is 85.11% of our budget, and 14.28 million in general fund revenues. The tax collections, we are at 90.5% collected through the end of April, and last year, at the end of April, we were at 90.8% collected. So we're pretty much neck and neck with lack of the last year. Onto page 69, expenditures, period-to-date expenditures of 10.6 million, includes the transfers out of the 700,000 into the, to accounts. And that leaves our total expenditures at 75.18% of the budget, and 14.18 million. And if there are no questions over that, we'll move on to fund balance. Page 74, our general fund balance at the end of April was 3.58 million. Okay, Eastwast Projects, page 76. We have $4,999 in that account. Local Projects, page 78. We have, got a little interest there. We have $502.26.
All righty.
A little bit on those few days. Page 80 is the 2016 bond sinking account. We began the month with the $214,374. We had the 2016 bond and interest payment of $214,370. We have $4.65 in that account. The debt service account on page 83, we began the month with 1.49 million. We had April receipts of 138,000, and that is a 27.5% increase from April 2020.
Thank you, spring break.
Yeah.
So we have the 2014 bonded interest payment of $669,906, leaving us with a balance of $963,996 in the debt service account. Finally, the Energy Efficiency Lease Debt Service Account, page 87. We started the month with $610. We had the transfer in of 200,000 from the general operating account. We have a balance of $20610. Are there any questions over any of that?
Tammy, you do a great job keeping up with all this, and we truly appreciate the work that you put into this, into the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. All right, barring any questions, if you come up with anything between now and Monday, again, that's where we'll do the, the budget, and we'll pick up on any other changes that might need to be there. Mr. Masah, can you talk about facilities?
Great evening again. Start off with top dressing of our fields. Dr. Pulwell's is one of his first... Great evening again. Start off with top dressing of our fields. Dr. Poulos, one of his first, um, charges was for us to come up with a field maintenance schedule. That was exactly what happens each month, every day of, um, how our fields are addressed throughout the county. And through that schedule, it was just this month that was planned for top dressing. Top dressing is the leveling off of the field. They add, um, river sand to the top of the field to make sure that it's completely flat, that there's no holes, no possibilities of kid twisting his ankles and a little pothole that happens just by kids running around kicking up the dirt. You know, all of a sudden, some of the, the grass gets dispersed and there's a tripping hazard. So each year, um, we choose, um, the right fields. It's not an every-year situation for every field. But this year, we chose the, uh, middle school football field, the middle school, the high school practice field, and then, of course, our main, um, playing floor for softball. And the guy, the gentleman who did it, um, did an outstanding job. It's a really top-notch company. They came in with at least four or five tractors.
It's very professional.
Professionally done, and, uh, our fields look great. Um, and it will be in time that we scheduled it early enough this year. Like, every year, we've been doing this in July. And, um, we're always pressed for football season, whether the grass is going to be grown through. And I'm always holding my breath on what's going to happen with the top dressing. This year, um, due to Ms. Franklin and Dr. Poulos, um, creatively budgeting it out, that we were able to get it done this month, and we're going to have plenty of time, and actually plenty of time that it will still be grown through for graduation.
That's right.
Um, the grass is already starting to sprout up in those green little tips, and it's going to look very good. That brings me right into our graduation plan. As you know that we are planning graduation on the football field this year. Really excited about being outside, but with that comes a lot of planning that has to be, um, taken into consideration. We've already rented and, um, reserved a beautiful stage with skirting all the way around it. That's meant for outdoor, approximately two foot off the ground. And with that, also chairs that are all matching, that are designed for being on the field. They will come in on Thursday morning before graduation. Um, we've taken care of, uh, already done a preliminary check of the sound system. Sounds great. However, we are, um, in the throes of purchasing brand-new wireless microphones. So that we'll have a, a couple of them out there that, um, we won't be relying on one microphone for, for the presentation. Mr. Boone's been constantly on top of the, the sound. Um, we've been out there several times. And, um, the distance, he was able to reach all the way across the, um, field with the system we have now, but we're even upgrading that. So we're going to be in a great position. With that in mind, we know that it's a possibility of rain. So we will also be preparing the middle, the high school gymnasium as if we were having graduation in there. Our stage, our backdrop, everything will be ready to go on the Wednesday before because we do plan on having baccalaureate in the gymnasium. So, uh, we've scheduled with Mr. Michael Heiser to do the sound in the gymnasium. He's, um, awesome, as you know, to work with, and he, um, has connections to, um, do the best we can with the sound in that gym before we, um, actually get the panels that we're sound dampening. We're going to have it set up and ready to go. So, we're meeting, we've already met twice with the high school. They're meeting on, on their own, but the districts had two, uh, two official meetings with them to set everything up. On Monday of next week, we plan on meeting again for another meeting, just to make sure that all the details are covered. And we feel really good about, um, everything being in place and ready to go for graduation. Um, and a, a side note, exciting that there will be some fireworks at the end when we throw up the.
I'm not going to tell anybody, but I. Hell, no, no.
You know, no, sorry. I apologize for that. But, um, we're excited about all the preparations that we're having. It, it should go off really well. My next item of business is the, oh, in addition, we are pressure washing. We've ordered two new pressure washers, um, forty-four hundred PSI pressure washers. Um, the addition of the, um, new staff that's coming on July, we'll have a complete pressure washing plan. But before that happens, everything will look top-notch on that.
For great, again, that's a long-term maintenance plan, and we've got to continue to, to, to get everything up to the level that it needs to be. And if you start to even look at this building and Todd Grant, you can already start to see that mold that starts, and we need to make sure we're keeping up and cleaning that off.
That leads me to the next item is the kitchen project. Um, the kitchen project is in, is going famously. We're really excited about the progress we've made with Mr. Tooten. We are, uh, meeting tomorrow with the project engineer, who's going to come and walk our building and make sure that, you know, start the process of, um, developing the actual, uh, plan for the details of the construction project. And Dr. Poulos and, um, has met today, and, um, the discussion has started about whether it be a project management, um, or we're going to, um, do an RFP for the proposal or next week do an RFP for a project manager. Those are our two options at this point.
Construction management versus the bid. And so, um, next week, Mr. Tooten will come. He'll talk to us a little bit about what, what the pros and cons of both.
So, we're really excited about this kitchen project. It's going to, um, really bring the building around to having everybody in the, in the building where we have, uh, one central location, and then allow us the opportunity to, uh, make a front entrance to grow a proper, beautiful front courtyard and restore it back to, um, the beauty of all of our schools. You know, the, the high school is beautiful, of course, Todd Grant is. And the middle school has the potential to be even better than it is now, um, by the plans that we have in, in stake there. That brings me to my next order of business. Any questions on the kitchen project? That brings me to my next order of business is the pressure washing, again, um.
You went through that. Go ahead with the communications plan.
Oh, we're really excited about our communications plan. We have, uh, coordinated with Hastings that the project is underway. They've already made their first request for licensing. Um, this week, we'll give them an initial down payment at the end of the week for, for the project. It looks like in May, um, we will be actually programming them. And before the July, we will be able to, uh, the goal is to have the c- project complete and, um, ready to go, where everybody will have, um, their radios in hand. Our next step will be, like I said, in May, we'll have a meeting to program them all, distribute everything. And, um, there's a little details of who gets what and what signal they're on, and we have to work out the details on that. But everything is in order for us to have a solid communication system in the sys- in the system that, uh, will serve us well in times of an emergency as well as day-to-day operation. Again, our buses will all have radios that cover the whole county and as well all of our administrators, and radios available for teachers that go out on playground that, um, are able to make sure that we're in constant communication with the staff that we need to communicate.
And we'll build in training for everybody as well, so they know how to operate these things. Okay? Hit the pre-K?
A couple radios, and, um, the ladies decided that they wanted one that was a little smaller and petite. And, uh, we've got some good radios that are handheld and, uh, able to be used in, in a great way. And then last item of business is the COVID report.
The pre-K. Go hit the pre-K.
I apologize for that. Pre-K. Um, we're going to be doing some moving around of pre-K at Todd Grant. And the reason being is that right now, if you know, the pre-K drops off their students at the gymnasium here, and then they walk them all the way down to the pre-K center, which is on the left-hand side of the building. Well, we have a beautiful parking lot on the right side of the building that barely gets used with entrances into the building. So we're just going to do a swap. Pre-K is going to go to the other side, and we'll move some classrooms down to, and just do a swap. We have, already have a bid for our covered walkway that will go right to the road, and it's just going to be a lot safer, um, a lot less congestion in the parking lot, and just be an overall better plan for where our pre-K is. Um, with moving buildings or moving classrooms, Ms. Riles is already, um, developing a classroom map of all the classrooms and where the teachers will be, and, um, we're working with Beck and we're working with maintenance to put together a, a solid plan for moving everybody that, um, when teachers come back, they're going to be ready to go with all their stuff in their room, and it'll be set up in, in a nice way for them. But the moving of the pre-K to the other side is just a smart move for safety and for aesthetics, too. It's going to look really good.
COVID?
That brings me to our COVID, and again, um, COVID, we're not letting off the gas. I want to just say that we're going to complete the year strong. We've done a great job, and you can see that by the numbers we have now. At, we only have two students that are under quarantine. You know that all year, we've been up and down, and I think we've gotten through our spring break rush. We figured that there would be a, um, a little increase after spring break. We were right, but we're past that now. We're back down to, uh, where we should be, and we predict that we're going to stay that way. Uh, this is an opportunity for me to thank all the principals, all the staff, and all, everybody at each school because, um, this hasn't been easy, but they're, they're consistent. They continue down the path, and, um, we're providing a safe place for kids to come. Any questions?
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, goal, Area Four, quality workforce. If I could talk real quick, I, I know this is a hot topic out there with our employees. And so Tammy is kind of in the hot seat about bonus check distribution, so, uh, what's our goal right now?
I am going to try to have this done by the end of this week.
It'd be nice. It's Teacher Appreciation Week. If we could roll it up Friday, we're, it, there's a lot involved in it. So, uh, unlike other districts who had a stockpile of money and just could issue it, we had to pull it down, and, and there's different pots of money. So she's gonna, she's going to get everything together.
Ms. Tammy, you pull that off, you'll be the bomb.
I know people are really anticipating those checks. So, um, new teacher mentor program, uh, Ms. Sheets, can you just quickly tell us a little bit about what we're doing? And this is on our strategic plan, so I just want to kind of give a, a quick update on that.
Right, back again. So we had twenty-two participants. That means we had eleven new teachers or mentees and then eleven mentors. Um, we met before school ever started. I had the mentors and the mentees meet together, and I put together a Google Classroom for them because it's one thing for principals to say, oh, here's your mentor, and a lot goes into that. You know, it's like proximity, um, maybe similar subjects taught, personalities, kind of thing. Um, but I wanted them to know, like, so I made up a list of topics to talk about every week so that the mentees and the mentors would at least touch base once a week. And, um, in a survey that I did after just recently, um, a lot of their, their conversations were hallway or lunchroom or before-school conversations, which is exactly what teachers do, if you know them. And those are sometimes the most productive and best conversations to have, but they did have them, and we monitored that. Um, we also, I had the mentors and the mentees go observe other teachers teach because that's the best way to learn. It's kind of like doctors when they do their rounds and instructional rounds. That's what we do as teachers. So they did observations together, and then we also met about once a month. We met seven times this year, and, um, we went over topics like grading, um, the success criteria. Risa came and did one thing over the code of ethics, just to kind of let it sink in a little bit for new teachers. We talked about time management one time, parent conferences, how to have those. It can be tricky sometimes. And then we also watched teachers together teach. We watched videos and talked about those kinds of things. And then we also, uh, talked about classroom management. And, um, based on their feedback, I think they enjoyed the program. For the most part, time, time is always, um, hard in any job, but especially with teachers. But they enjoyed it. They enjoyed the time together. Um, and so next year, they would, their feedback is to focus, um, more, even more so on classroom management tips. And so that'll be fun.
Did we have any new teachers leave this year?
We have one new teacher leave this year that I know of. That's, that she, that she won't be returning next year that I know of.
That's right. I think it's just one.
She's, yeah.
Now.
Are we still doing exit interviews? I don't have the answer to that.
Be a good thing to do.
I think that would be a good thing to do.
One more thing in your box.
I know. I just was curious as to know if, if the new teacher, if the reason she left, she wasn't happy, or is there something we didn't do to? Right. Any other questions?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, next.
Dr. Poulos.
Yes, sir.
If I may, um, since we were speaking on new teacher, our new teacher, um, mentor program, do we still have the leadership, um, program?
Academy.
Academy?
No.
No?
It's not her blanket left, I don't believe.
Yeah, I didn't know.
You know, I, I know we talked about developing one, and, um, COVID kind of threw us a wrench in that.
Right, right.
You know, prior to that, they were going off doing something with Paige, and the, and the principals really didn't think that it was productive. I'd love to develop something with GLISI, Georgia C- Georgia's Leadership Institute for School Improvement. Um, they're, to me, it, that's like an educational revival. It's a great program. Um, there's potential for that to, to go, because I'd love to be able to build the capacity for leader, teachers, teacher leaders as well that can move up into, to positions.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions? The next item up here is a, uh, first viewing of the new policy, TBIA, which is Teacher Evaluation Appeals. Last, last legislative session, not this year, but last year, um, the requirement was to allow for a, a new process. They haven't had it in place before, but to, to provide for tenure teachers, doesn't say tenure in here, but for tenure teachers that receive a, an unsatisfactory or ineffective evaluation, summative evaluation to appeal that to, to their raider above or just to a neutral individual to review whether or not they should have. You know, with a, with an unsatisfactory, um, a lot goes into that, okay? If, if a tenure teacher receives one, you know, there's, there's potential for non-renewal after another one. There's also potential that you don't move up in the pay scale. So, uh, this was something that the, the legislature put in place, and the requirement was to have a, a policy in place by one July. So, this is a, an example that was provided by GSBA as a, as a standard, meets all the bells and whistles of the law. And so if you, you take a look at that, this is, again, this is a first viewing of this. Um, the appeal process that's there designates whether it's a principal, if the principal's not, et cetera, and it goes, it goes in tiers. But if you have any questions regarding this, it doesn't, it does not apply to your first-year teachers that don't like the evaluation or the second or the third. It's about when they get offered that fourth or subsequent contract. All right, any questions on that? If not, we'll keep that on the books for thirty days and go back later on. Um, parent leave, that, we will have to develop a policy if the governor signs this. The governor hasn't signed, uh, many of the, of the new proposed laws yet, uh, but if he does sign this, it's three weeks of paid leave if they have a child, if they foster, adopt, et cetera. So this is a big deal. So, um, where the money comes from for pay for this stuff is still to be debated. But, uh, when you talk about now, if what hap- in the other instance, what happens if you have a husband and wife teacher team, et cetera? Do both of them get to go? So there's still a little ambiguity on it, but if, once they do that, they'll have to come back out with a, with a proposed policy, a best practice, and, and, uh, we'll put that in place. But this, this could very well become law for us. All right, uh, I do have some personnel recommendations to make after we go into executive session. And then the, uh, goal, Area Five, Community Engagement, just real quick, Macintosh Head Start. We, we went through the building with Macintosh Head Start at the request of Dr. Rogers from the County Commission. He, he basically, if, they have people waiting lists right now to get into Head Start. Uh, we don't control Head Start, but if, we, if space was made available to them, could they expand? So, we walked through the annex, and we provided an opportunity, and I said, if this is what you'd like to do to expand and/or to come in, does it fit your size requirements, et cetera? They're reviewing all those options. Then if they come back to us, I'd probably come to the board and say, basically, that building's a good fit for them. Uh, we'd work out an MOU, they paid electricity, maintenance, all those type of things if it comes to it. Love to have them in here proximity-wise to the elementary school, great transition, also an ability to influence what they're learning. Um, the concern at this point from Head Start is they're concerned that the size of the rooms may not meet their physical requirements per student. So, they're going to go back, review it, and they'll come back and ask us.
How many rooms do we have in there?
You're talking about these rooms?
Every room in there.
They only have two.
In the annex. Every room in the annex is available right now.
So it should work.
If that were the case, the current Head Start.
They ain't got but two rooms, one side.
And I've asked that, but I haven't been in there, but they're saying that those rooms are seven hundred square feet. Um, I.
They only have two sides.
I haven't been there. I'm just doing what I was told.
So if they told you, they got.
So they need thirty-five, thirty-five square feet for a studio.
It's not even as big as the lobby, Dr. Poulos.
Okay.
This room is the size of the building.
Yeah, the whole building is this.
Yeah, the whole building is this, is this size.
We have given them the option, and we're doing our part. That's the point I wanna make sure we're stressing. Um, this, I think, could be a very good thing if they could expand their program and, and add another Head Start. You know, one of the, one of the biggest concerns that we have as educators is starting early with literacy. And so Head Start, that's one of the goals. So, um, anything we can do, we're gonna try to do it. All right, uh, the last area would be a recommendation, go into executive session for, um, personnel, and I'm gonna just throw it under the caveat of legal, and Mr. Braun will tell us whether it fits that, when we get there.
Okay, I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McCover, second.
Say it.
Mr. Hewitt, all those in favor? Okay, here's five zero, we'll be back. Okay, Macintosh County Board of Education had adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel and legal. A motion to return to open session.
Amen.
Ms. McDonald, second.
Second.
McCover, all those in favor? Okay, five zero. All right, more comments. We'll start down here at this point.
All right. Wind it down, getting close. That rate looks great, all the plans that have been made, all the, uh, good, good work for, from our entire system team. We appreciate everybody, and, uh, this is what it's all about, coming into the, coming into the final days of it. We appreciate everybody, looking forward to graduation.
Uh, this week is, uh, Dr. Pulis stated earlier, Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yep.
And, um, being married to a teacher for twenty, almost twenty-five years, um, these teachers, you know, they reaching their pockets like people don't know. I remember when my wife used to ha- buy her own copy paper. Um, you know, buy a child clothes, buy a child food. I mean, these teachers go above and beyond. And, you know, with this, uh, especially this past year, you know, we can sit up here and this board can govern, and, you know, Dr. Pulis and his staff can run the day-to-day operation. These teachers are the glue, and, um, you know, it's a, it's a thankless job, you know? But, um, they, we got some good teachers in this school system. We have a great school system, and, um, I just, I applaud each and every one of you. Thank you so much. And, um, you know, I, I think I'm speaking for the whole board.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Um, last meeting when we were on, uh, TV, I didn't have my facts, um, on something that happened, but the passing of Mr. Bobby Charlton. Um, Mr. Bobby was a, uh, employee of the school system for thirty years. And, uh, he drove a bus route. He'd drive in the morning, work on the buses during the day, haul the kids in the afternoon. And, um, I got to know Mr. Bobby personally, um, because my mama drove the bus for about twenty-two years, twenty-three years. So, um, he became a, a friend, and my daddy had a mom and pop store beside the house there in town, and, and there was a sand pear tree that's, is still there today. And, um, Bobby would come by, and we'd get out there and pick those sand pears, and he would feed them to his hogs. So, that, and he would stop by and talk to daddy, and just a good, good person, um, and he'll be missed. Um, congratulations to the baseball team, making playoffs for the first time since two thousand and five. So, um, you know, got knocked out in the first round, but hey, we were there. Lot of other teams had to go home, but we made it. And our girls' high school soccer team, um, in only their second year, they made it to the playoffs. So, uh, good job by those young ladies and the coaches, and, um, I echo what Fred said. We're, we're almost there, we can smell it, and, uh, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
I concur with everything Galen said, and, um, again, want to wish everyone that got the CATS WITL awards last Monday night. That was a very nice ceremony, and that foundation does a lot for our school system every year to recognize our students that are such Golden Rule winners. And, um, just wanna thank everybody for their support for that, and looking forward to graduation.
Amen. Uh, ditto to everything that was said. Um, uh, we do thank our teachers. I think about sometimes when, um, I don't fully understand some of the work that I'm helping the boys with, and I can text, and sometime it's eight, nine o'clock, and, you know, you, we still got teachers that do respond. And, and, um, and, uh, Galen, I'm one of them persons, and you probably know 'cause you see my, see the call with, uh, Amy get it, but Amy is my go-to person, 'cause she's at the middle school. So, I use her a lot, I do, um, and she, she helps me out, um, and we appreciate that. We do, um, I wish we could do more for our teachers, because it's well-deserved. Um, but I do think and truly believe that it'll come. It come in many ways, um, but you'll get what you deserve. And so just continue to work hard and do what you all do. And, um, wanna encourage the parents to push our kids, too, um, for the summer program. Uh, it's gonna benefit the kids. It's not just for remediation, you know, it's for, to excel. So you, you have, uh, an advantage to take and use the program. So please use the summer program to enhance our kids and help them to grow. And, uh, I think that's it. Thank you, um, to the staff and Dr. Pulis and his staff. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm gonna start going first, so y'all don't say everything. But I do want to thank the teachers, um, this week being Teacher Appreciation Week, and it's not just this week that we appreciate you. We appreciate you the entire year, um, and like Galen said, it is a thankless job, um, or so it feels like it, because you don't get the thanks, but I think those rewards come when you see those students reach that mark and reach that next mark. Um, it, it is a very rewarding job, and we appreciate everything that you do, and, um, Dr. Pulis and your staff, we thank you for all your hard work, and Ms. Tammy getting us through this budget. It's, at times feels like a thankless job, I'm sure for you, too, but thank you, we do appreciate you.
Yes.
And, um, graduation's just around the corner. We made it. In spite of everything, we made it, so, do you have anything to say?
I just wanna, again, commend all of the teachers, all the employees out there that work hard each and every day with a selfless service, and, and the effort that's put forth, um, it's noticed, it's not always commented on, and this week is obviously significant, because we wanna make sure we, we highlight the significance of our teachers and our employees. Uh, we have a great staff and faculty, we truly, truly do, and a great student body, and we're just getting better and better, so... But it's gonna take all of us to work together to make this possible. So God bless you. This is a wonderful board, appreciate the support, and, uh, wanna rich, wish Richie a happy birthday. God bless y'all.
Richie, you have a speech for your birthday?
Uh, it's time to go home.
We're adjourned.
Thank y'all.